Ask for gaps to be filled in, if you will. George, would you mind taking it from here because I think you had the an application and before we do, I see Mac has raised his hand. Mac, what we do?
Sorry, Peter. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the first meeting where you first started to review this. And I'm really sorry about that. But um, I do have lots of comments on the application. And I know it would have been easier had I done that, you know, at that first meeting, but but unfortunately I couldn't. And so I but I but I do feel like they are significant comments. And so I kind of would really like an opportunity to go through them.
Do they deal with completeness, Mac?
Yes, they do.
Um, I would say let's take them as we get to them, if you don't mind. And perhaps if it's okay with you, we have the checklist and I didn't have that on me at the time. George did. And if we could go through that, perhaps we would find a way to to also address your concerns about the completeness of the application. Okay.
Okay, I may have stuff beyond that, just just so you know.
Okay.
Because I kind of went through their 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 application page by page. You know what I'm saying?
I do.
I have stuff on each page as well as a site plan, but hopefully it'll all match up.
I'd like to think that many things will match up, but it's possible. We did not hit all of the things you might be thinking of. So if it's okay, let's let's try to do this. George, do you have that checklist?
I do. And before we get started with the actual checklist itself, one thing we skipped over last time we reviewed this, Peter, was we never did determine, and this is a question for Gary. If the fee had been paid and if so, how much?
So let's turn to Gary.
On the list.
Yeah, the fee was paid. It was $50 because there was no building involved.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks. Thanks, Gary.
So on the checklist and Mac, stop me when I get to an item that you want to discuss it further. Okay. Because I was originally planning just to go back to the items we had last time decided were incomplete or lacking information. And I wasn't going to go through the entire list, but what I'll do is well, we'll just take it item by item and see where you want to chime in. So the first item was the application form itself. And that we had decided was incomplete because there were a lot of questions where the response was to be determined. Those have all been completed as best I can tell, unless somebody knows differently. And I see Max got his hand up.
Yeah, so I I do have lots of issues with the application form that that it is not complete. And I guess I just I'd like to preface it by saying the reason I have lots of comments on this application really stem from the fact that I'm looking for clarity. And what I mean by that is at our last meeting where we talked to our town attorney, it was clarified by him that this application is a is a new review of a proposed commercial development. It is specifically not the home business. And we can't have and we can't have anything that requires waterfront access using 24Q and Road. And so what I want to see is a clear identification of exactly what this commercial development proposal is for. In other words, there was a lot of confusion. I watched the video of that first meeting that I that I missed. And there was a lot of confusion as to what was a home business and what is a commercial business and what is allowed and what was being done previously and what is now being done. And I don't think, or at least I'm not comfortable going through and clearly making a decision, findings of fact, as it were, on an application, unless I know exactly what I'm reviewing. And so I think we need to go back and clearly define what was allowed under the home business and what was being done under the home business. Once we clearly define that, this application needs to clearly state exactly what is being proposed distinct from the home business and what structures, what soil amendments, what developments, anything over and above the home occupation. And I really don't feel like that has been done on the application. And there's lots of lines within the application. I can go line by line, all the ones I circled if you want, Peter, or you know, I don't know how you want me to do that.
Let me ask you this. Go ahead, George.
Well, I was just, I have a little bit different takeaway from our meeting with the town attorney, and that is what's in this application is a standalone. It has nothing to do with the home occupation permits approved back in 2006 or whenever it was. The this is a standalone application. It's broader in scope than the home occupation permit that was issued and the shoreline zoning permit that was issued. And you know, if if this is, so if whatever decision we come to about this, what's before us, which, you know, is seems somewhat clear to me. It's all the structures. It's the trailer parking area and the boat shop and and all the all the disturbed area that currently exists. Because again, this was all developed after the ordinance went into place, but without a commercial development review permit. So but whatever we decide on this permit, the the home occupation business permit still stands. It's a that was an, you know, historical independent decision by the town, and it still stands, even if we rejected this permit. And if we approve this permit, then, you know, this is broader in scope. And so, you know, there's some overlap there, but the more stringent of the two would prevail.
Well, I totally agree that that this is further in scope, but I guess my confusion stems from exactly what am I reviewing? Exactly what are we doing? You say the home occupation, whatever they did under home occupation, they can still do. And I totally agree with that. And that was discussed at that first meeting and with the attorney. My problem is I don't know exactly what that is. It's never been stated clearly to me. And if if you watch the video from the first time y'all reviewed this when I wasn't there, there was never clarity there either. So exactly what are we reviewing that is over and above the home occupation? For example, line number 16 on the application for that's in front of us says, provide a brief description of the development or proposal size and number of structures, proposed uses, etc. The answer is the applicant operates current, the applicant operates a boat restoration shop and boat storage yard. That's it. Well, I know they operate currently present tense, a boat restoration shop and boat storage yard. But exactly what part of that is home occupation and what part of that is the larger commercial development for which they're actually applying to us? There's no, there's no detail there to tell me exactly what I'm actually reviewing.
I didn't obviously make my point very clear. I don't, it doesn't matter to us, the planning board. It doesn't matter to us what was approved for the home occupation. All that matters to us is what's in this application before us under the commercial development review ordinance. The, you know, what happened in the past, happened in the past, that permit continues to live on. And whether they got approved for something slightly different, for example, number of employees, for example, is irrelevant to us and the decision we have to make. Now, I I agree with you that, and this is not uncommon and isn't unique to this application, but the description of, you know, the description of that line item in the application, you know, doesn't cover the scope of what is being proposed. The better, you know, the better descriptive or describer of the scope of the project is the site plan, which is includes what's written in that line item and a whole bunch more. And, you know, I don't know, Peter, this and on my part generates sort of a procedural question because historically, when we've gone through these commercial applications, the completeness review was not not 100% completeness. It was sort of like 80% completeness. Do we have the major pieces sufficient so that we can have the detailed review that Mac is has already done? And the way we've done that is once we have the big chunks and, you know, the items on the checklist, then we go back line item by line item through the application form and then all in this case, all the exhibits, including, you know, the stormwater plan, the fosters control plan, etc. So it's, you know, it's, do we do it? Do that line by line now? Or do we do it later? I guess is the question.
So from my perspective, we hit the checklist to look for completeness. That's what I'm looking for. And I think if there is a need for better descriptions or something in the line by line part, perhaps there'd be a way to to be more complete at times. For example, Mac, the example you gave on 16. You know, the answer that was provided points to some amount of business that takes place there, but does it actually describe in that line, the size and number of structures, proposed uses, etc. I think the answer is no, but as George pointed out, the site plan, I think, does that does show that other information. So in order to be complete or more descriptive on a line by line item is is what we're looking for, a way to improve that information on that line. Is that what you're looking for too?
Well, I I think I'm pretty sure I understand George's comment and I and I totally understand that 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 makes sense to me. I guess part of my issue is that I I'm somewhere in a gray area, meaning yes, I'm going line by line. So did they fill out the application? Yes. So in terms of George's comment, procedurally, yes, they filled it out. We can move on. However, part of my line by line comments are that if we, what I found is that there's a lot of confusion and incorrect information and until we get the correct information or given given more information, we may need more, it will make, it will potentially make other checklist items incomplete. For example, that was just one thing, but they did not include all the structures on the site in their application. If you include all the structures, if you include all the other information, will that then trigger a requirement for a stormwater plan? So do you see what I'm saying? Yes, we could, we could potentially go through and say, yes, it's all complete. But then when we go through line by line, we'll say, oh, wait a minute, this is not correct. And so actually, we do need this other information because that other information wasn't complete. For example, the number nine on the application, streets on which the development or proposed use is located. They list Hewland Road. They do not list Red Oak Lodge Road, even though Red Oak Lodge Road is clearly part of it. Right? Total acreage of the parcel.
Own Red Oak Lodge Road.
That's not mine.
Not a town road.
That is not my interpretation of the deeds that were included with this application.
Then you need because you are incorrect.
No, I disagree. I'm perfectly confident in my ability to read deeds.
And my friend, I've paid plenty in legal counsel to understand what I own back there. And I am under the belief that you are incorrect.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Mac, in terms of getting through this information to not only have a check, not only to whether know whether or not the checklist is complete, to know if we have sufficient information listed line by line. I think we're at a, we're at a place where we need to move on some things. And perhaps if there is a need for to seek more information to point that out, I'd like to suggest that if possible. Okay, one, one question from Susan, then we have to move on.
Yeah, I mean, are you implying that we're going to approve the application and then go back and try to fill? Okay.
No, no, not at all. Like I said at the start, the whole point of tonight's meeting is to look for a way to determine if the checklist is complete. That in and by itself is not an approval or a denial of the application. It is just a process that must be done first. George?
I would just add doesn't preclude us from later in the process for asking for additional information if our more detailed review such as Mac is describing reveals that that information is needed for us to be able to make a finding one way or the other.
Yeah, and I guess, okay, so so Peter and George, I see, so so at this point, so if we go with the track that you're going at, George, procedurally, you know, are these things part of the application? Yes, it's complete. But I can tell you right now that I have so many issues not on so many pieces of this application that work that the next time we meet to discuss the line, there are going to be so many things that I'm going to say this is not correct. This is not complete. So they're going to have to go back and redo a ton of stuff. And so I guess my question is, do we have them do it now? Or do we have them do it later? You know, for example, the site plan, I wish you could see. I have so many red marks on the site plan. The site plan is just not correct in my interpretation of, you know, if you look at the deeds that were included with the application and you trace the lot lines, they don't match up with the site plan. There's material that's not included in the site plan that so so do they have a site plan? Yes, complete. Is that site plan correct or truthful? You know, enough that I could actually review it to make any sense about whether or not this proposal can can actually be approved? No, not at all.
Well, Mac, I, you know, when I purchased that property from the town of Belgrade, it was surveyed by K and K surveyors out of Oakland. They have continued to survey that property all along through the process. There's been two different pieces parceled off, one that just sold off recently to the School Street property up on School Street One. Let me see, it went to Ronnie Bella Vance back in the day, and everything has been groovy right up until now.
So what I'd like to suggest is that we continue on with the checklist. And I'd like to make sure we also point to anything. Once we get through the checklist, if there are items on the line by line portion of the submission package that we really want to identify as things that we address, point to those things and say, this is where we would need some more information. I do want to strive to get complete information, not just a checklist, but complete information in all cases. Do you have a question?
I do. This is Jeff Allen. I'm the engineer with the prepared the application. And I think once we go through the checklist, I'd be more than happy to get a list from you. One thing I did last time is, you know, I accepted that you were you were the planning board had accepted these items as being complete. And so some of those issues or some of those items, I didn't spend a whole lot of time cleaning up in the application because I thought we thought we were done with that and we're going to move on. So what it makes sense, I think, if Mr. Steel was leading, or Mr. Seal, I'm sorry, was leading us tonight to go through the items that were not marked as approved or, you know, didn't have a conclusion last time. You know, if we could do that, then we can get into the detailed analysis that Mr. Sacco is talking about doing. But I think that's you know, that's what I was intending to do this evening is just go through the items that were missing before and see if I could answer those questions.
I'd like to proceed in that way. And because that checklist is very important, certainly. In any information that's supplied that we might be looking for to fully detail or sufficiently detail in the application, that's also important. And because as been mentioned before, you know, years from now, if anybody were to look at any of these applications, they may have questions. And it's always good to be able to say we've dotted our i's and start t's and looked at everything as fully as we can. So so with that in mind, I'd like to proceed with the checklist.
Okay, so you said just a couple of things, right? If it's a major thing, Peter, to bring it up, otherwise we'll talk about it in detail later.
If that's okay, I'd like to approach it that way.
Yeah, so 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 just a couple of things. Number nine on the application, Hewland Road, I think Red Oak Lodge Road should be included. Existing conditions on the parcel, it says structure number 11. Structures, it lists two buildings, but I drove by the property. And if you go to the storage off of Red Oak Lodge Road, there are actually two sheds. So I think those are structures, and so they should be included. And that affects how much footprint and, you know, so it affects things later on.
Those are both temporary structures on a private road.
I I disagree with, I disagree with that interpretation, but we can talk about that later. Other existing uses of land, other existing uses of land, it says none. But both storage is clearly
What you just said?
In that same number 11, it says other existing uses of land. You say none, but boat storage is clearly an existing use other than structures. And just again, just just for clarification, I know this. I know this may sound semantic, but I don't think it is at all. The first page of the application says Sean Grant, DBA Brightside Marina, right? But the site plan says Brightside Marine. Elsewhere in the application, it's called Brightside Wooden Boat Services Incorporated.
Let me clarify that for you, Matt. My corporate name is Brightside Wooden Boat Services, Inc. We can have as many DBAs under that as we wish. I can call it bright sized junkyard. Should I wish?
I just feel like there's a lot of confusion and
Your part, yes.
Clarity, for clarity, it would be easier if it was all labeled the same thing. So we know exactly
If you look back through the notes, I actually pointed that out to the town about a week and a half, two weeks ago, that, by the way, if you review, I put in, by the way, our DBA is Brightside Marine, not Brightside Marina. Neither AE Hudson caught it, nor did the town. But if that really affects you, my friend, we can change that.
Thank you, Sean.
You're welcome.
And I also just want to clarify. So that's all I'll say. There's a lot of other things with the application, but that's all I'm bringing up now. But before we move on, I do want to clearly state for the record, I have nothing against the applicant. I do not come in in any way, shape or form.
Well, then why didn't you stop when you drove by the other day, bro? You got questions? Stop and ask.
I am simply looking for the same level of information I do for all the applications I review.
I didn't say that. I said, if you, when you drove by checking out the property, dude, it's a dead end. One lane camp road. You stood out like a sore thumb. All you had to do was swing in and say, hi, man. I'm curious about this and that. I'm trying to hide nothing.
Well, that it's also a private road.
And my desk points towards it. Anyhow, Mac, you know, we're off on the wrong foot here, but Bud, I'm not here to try to rape this environment. Trust me, we have in high, we have hired engineers and environmental consultants to try to do this right. Look through our application thoroughly and with an open mind. And you'll see that we're people that are just trying to do it right and make a living in a little vacation town.
Go ahead, George.
Um, just for the
Um, just for the record, and I think Mac knows this, but just so everybody else knows it too. Legally, we're not able to have sidebar discussions outside the public forum with the applicant, with any of the other interested parties, that would be considered ex parte communication. And if you may recall, that's what got the town of Booth Bay into big trouble and into the courts with how they handled the expansion of the botanical garden down there by having ex parte communications with neighbors. So most of us would love nothing better than to stop by and have a cup of coffee, but we're just prevented from doing so.
I would also add to that the, my understanding from the main municipal association is that any site visits, especially on private land, should be scheduled with the landowner.
That's correct. And it also needs to be publicized.
Exactly. Wish that didn't happen clearly.
Right, right.
So Peter, do you want me to start off on the checklist?
Please, and thank you very much, Mac, for bringing up those points. So go ahead, George.
So starting at the top again, the application form, because we're a number of, a fair number of questions that were only in the, and this is make sure we're all talking from this, speaking from the same, looking at the same document. We have an amended application before us that was submitted on February 3rd. The last time we went through this, we had a draft or a preliminary application that was, had a different date on it, if I can find that for a moment. Anyway, the so it's the latter, the more recent application that we need to be looking at because it's substantially different in places and more complete as well.
I think that the previous one was dated September 28th, 2020.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Um, the next item was the Atkins agent authorization letter that was missing, but we now have that. Um, the next item was the copy of the deed, which we had last time. Um, the next item was a written waiver request, which we did not have last time, but we have one now. Peter, I was going to suggest procedurally that we kind of put that in the parking lot, set that aside, as well as a later item that deals with the whether the screening standards, because the two are, the waiver is from the screening standards. And I would suggest we go through the rest of the list, come back to this because depending on what decision we make, on whether to approve the waiver or not, affects what additional information may, may or may not need to be submitted.
It's a great idea. And that's also in line with, I think, what Mac had brought up before, maybe not for that specific item, but how there is a relationship between what's presented and what we might be asking for. So
Right.
So let's do that. So we'll put the waiver request in a parking lot and come back to that.
Okay. Did you finish that, George? Sorry. So can I go back to the copy of deed option sales agreement? So maybe I'm, maybe I'm misunderstanding or misreading, but according to the deeds that are included, I read it as the properties that we're looking at are owned by not just Sean Grant, but also Mark Berry and Samantha Luce. And so if that's the case, then shouldn't we have letters from the, all those landowners?
Samantha's my wife, Mark is my partner, and yes, I have a purchase sale from him. As a matter of fact, I actually have another purchase sale agreement on another adjacent lot to the tune of 40,000 square feet.
I'm just looking at the materials included in the application.
I was just small talking with you, my friend, Mac. There we are. Yes, you have it.
So, so Mac, can you help me out? What page you want in the, in the application?
So if you look through the deeds, there's basically a deed from 2006 where Mark Berry and Sean Grant buy property from the health center. Then in 2014, Mark Berry gives what is now known as law 56 to Sean Grant. And then in 2016, Sean Grant gives lot 56 to Samantha Luce. But uh, the larger 56B is, as far as I can tell, still owned by Mark Berry in conjunction with Sean Grant.
It is still owned by, but if you will look further, you'll notice there was a purchase sale between the two of us that we have not yet executed. We're both waiting for the appropriate time to do so. We have all tieria motors between the two of us as twice. It hasn't happened yet. But it will, as soon as is necessary, the purchase sale is, is my understanding, is adequate for these processes.
Mac, do we have that sales agreement in the application?
I don't, I don't see it now.
No, I didn't see it either. So I think the simple way to solve this is to
Sorry.
Sales agreements could be just provided to us. Uh, that would, all we need to do is to determine that there's a title right and interest. And I think with those sales agreements and the deeds that are, we already have, we would have that.
How would you like that provided?
Shouldn't it be included as in, in the same section as all the other deeds?
Okay. I mean, can, can I send that in by itself with a separate cover? I'd really prefer not to reprint this entire booklet. I could, I could send a cover letter explaining where to assert this or other appropriate items that come up later.
In my opinion, that would be fine.
Okay, thank you. George?
I would just say that, let's see what else there may be, Jeff, and and then we can maybe have that discussion again.
Okay.
I'm not that I'm not amenable to it being just part of a letter report or something of that nature, but or even by email, but.
And I I understand Samantha Luce is now your wife, Sean, I get that. But again, all I have and all future people are going to have is what's in the file. And what's in the file, from what I read, says Samantha Luce owns this property. So therefore she should be the one giving
No worries, Mac. Don't, you know. Confusion understood, but yes, I married Samantha and we're blissfully married. And yes, she owns that piece of property along with some pieces I own around it.
Right. So she should be able to easily put something in the file, just like you did.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you, Samantha. No. Uh, George? Where were we on the checklist?
We're coming back to the written waiver request and we're on to our well, the next item that we uh, didn't have last time, and there was some discussion about was a copy of the Belgrade shoreline zoning map and whether that was necessary or not to verify what zone in the shoreline zone the property was in. Uh, Mac, do you have anything before that? And a couple of items before that?
In terms of completeness, no.
So I tried, I talked to Mr. Fuller about the shoreline zoning map and they were unable to send that to me or get that to me. So I don't know. It's simply not available. I'd be happy to put it in there, but I couldn't get it. So I don't know how you go with that. Uh, we're more than 250 feet from the shoreline. So
Well, my recollection of the site plan is the site plan shows the shoreline zone demarcation point, the 250 feet from the mill stream slash Great Pond. So we know that part of the property and part of this project is in the shoreline zone. The question that Rich Baker at that meeting raised is what, what actual zone is it in? Uh, I think he was looking for verification that was in the commercial, no, whatever the zone is down in the village. It isn't general development, but it's and I don't know, Gary, if you can provide some
If Mr. Fuller could tell us what that is, I'd be happy to include it, but it's just, I couldn't research that myself.
You, you should have been able, there's a big map at the town office. I don't understand why you couldn't have determined that yourself.
Well, I guess I'll take a drive just to take a picture or pick something, something on the wall to tell you something that you could, never mind. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Jeff. Go ahead, George. I was, I was going to go after you.
Yeah, I was just asking Gary if he's there, if he knows off the top of his head the zone designation. I'm pretty certain I, I know that it's the same as Dave Store, for example, but
Yeah, so I, I'm looking at a map. I'm looking at my map that says limited commercial. So I, I'm pretty sure it's limited commercial. So the question isn't, do we know what it is or not? You know, that I guess the frustration on my part is it's clearly the responsibility of the applicant to provide it. If a portion of your development proposal is in the shoreline zone, I don't understand why it's so crazy for us to require that you identify on a map where you are and what district that is. I think that's pretty basic.
Asking like shit if you're trying to say that's crazy. Come on, man. He overlooked it, Mac. Take a fucking chill.
Kate, Sean, please, we really need some civility here. We're gonna
And so should he employ someone.
Not okay, Sean. It's not okay.
So hang on. So so I'm asking for some restraint on all persons. Jeff, I'm going to you. You're the representative here. We're asking, because we're asking for just information to be supplied. Can you do that or not?
I can. I would ask if, if the, well, I am not opposed to take a drive, but it would be much easier if someone could take a photograph of that map on the wall that isn't available digitally and send it to me. If they could do that, I could then mark that up and show where our property is on that, on that map.
Understood. Standby. Gary Fuller. Gary, if you're there and can hear me, can you come off mute? Gary may have a bad connection.
No, I got it.
Okay, sir.
Yes, I can do that, but it is online. We just put it online a week ago.
Oh, excellent, excellent.
Our shoreline map is online.
Okay, so I'd be great. I can use that now. It just
And if you, if you can't find that, if you can't find that, you call Nick and he'll, he'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
There's got to be a good way to get that to you directly. Okay, Jeff, can you go to the, at your leisure, Town of Belgrade website?
Right. I'd be happy to. I'll look there tomorrow. The problem is I filed this application two weeks ago before it was available online.
Understood. Thank you. But you see what we would need, right? Or
Yes, I
What we need.
I can get that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up.
Um, so the next item that we had left blank at our last first meeting on this proposal was copies of required state and local permits. Um, Mac, do you have anything prior to that? It's on the second page of the, I'm now on the second page of the checklist.
Yeah, I guess it's a question of whether or not we think a shoreline zoning permit is required, whether or not we think DEP permit is required. And that's kind of the gray area I was talking about earlier, you know?
The, I'll just tell you my thoughts on this based on my review of the application is the application states that no state DEP permits are required for this project. And I'm taking the applicant at their word there. The, they've gone to some effort to ensure that they don't trigger the requirement for a state stormwater permit. The issue that came up at that other meeting, that earlier meeting was uh, the lack of a copy of the permit issued, the shoreline zoning permit issued by the town uh, originally for the boat chop. And that is now included in exhibit Y.
The shoreline zone, I didn't see that. I don't have that.
Are you, I just want to make sure you're looking at the right application. Because we have two. We had the original that we reviewed, that we were working off of at that very first meeting. And then Mr. Allen submitted an amended one on February 3rd. Or dated February.
I'm looking at the February one.
Has the amended written right on it.
So in exhibit Y, and I can't give you a page number, but um, it's, I think it's the last exhibit in the application, as a matter of fact.
It is.
There's a shoreline zoning permit issued by the planning board of that era.
Do you have that, Craig?
It's dated May 1st, 2008. Permits there, as are the minutes of the meeting. And some email traffic.
I see a home occupation permit. Is that what you're talking about?
Correct.
That's not a shoreline zoning permit.
Well, the maybe I'm making, Peter, since you were the only one there, maybe you can clarify, but uh, I was assuming since the planning board approved it and planning board doesn't normally approve home occupation permits. Those are just the code enforcement officer. I assume this was a shoreline zoning permit.
This is a while ago, but yes, it is true. Back in May of 2008.
So
And if I am, in some respects, it doesn't matter because that's the local permit that they have and the local permit that we needed to copy of. And the lo- local permit that we needed to copy of.
Correct.
Well. That's the home occupation permit, but as you said earlier, George. And and I agree, or whatever, the home occupation is separate from this particular thing. So what we have in front of us is a commercial development proposal. So whether or not they got a home occupation permit, doesn't affect this commercial development review proposal. Do they need a shoreline zoning permit? Prior for this commercial development proposal? If they do, it's not here. If they don't, they don't.
Was there any part of this commercial development application that touches shoreline zone?
Uh, Mr. Chairperson, this is Peter Sargent, can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, I came in late, are you? Yeah, um, I I'm under the impression that shoreline zoning is not part of this application. So I, uh, the where the boat storage is, is beyond two hundred and fifty feet, right? That's what this application is all about.
That's what I thought.
So. Is anyone else on the board uh think differently? Let's hear about it.
I, I agree, boat storage is part of the application, but it's not the only application. This, the buildings are part of the application, the driveway, the, I mean.
Are they within two hundred and fifty feet?
Yeah. All that, all that's within two hundred and fifty feet, so there's a significant portion of the development site. As well as the proposed business that's occurring within the shoreline zone.
Uh, I'd like to hear from some of the other uh members on this.
Proposed business, it is an existing business.
Thanks, Sean. George.
Um. The uh, I I agree with Mac, uh, the entire proposal is. Uh, before us and uh the, within the shoreline zone is as shown on the site plan. The shop and the office are both within the shoreline zone. Um, the um. But again, I I uh see this permit as in the exhibit Y as. Approving the shop at least. Um. As a home occupation, not for having more than two employees, but. Um, but for up to two employees. Uh, and so I, it seems to me this meets. The submission requirement that we um, that's included in the checklist and the ordinance.
Uh, Craig Alexander, how do you, what do you, what do you think about this?
I agree with George, um, it's already been given out and it's sitting right here in our exhibit Y.
All right, I I got, I'm looking at the application and I I go as high as exhibit uh L, so what, why am I missing? Huh?
You don't have an updated one, then?
I I went over to town office yesterday morning and I picked up from the personnel there, this is what they gave me. So.
Right at the back, it's the last three or four pages.
The what?
It's the last three or four pages at the back of it.
Yeah, oh, oh, okay, oh, wait a minute, okay, so hold on, I'm I, I'm sorry, I got, okay, I get the right application, all right.
Yeah. Okay. I'm satisfied with this guy so far, let's go, let's move on from my perspective.
Because I had to go in front of the planning board, so back then they, for that home occupancy. We didn't go in front of the planning board, so that was a a shoreline zoning. That was the reason why it was going in front of the planning board.
So. So you're saying this is, but if that's a shoreline zoning permit, right? That's a shoreline zoning permit for the home occupation.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yep.
Yep, it is correct.
We do not have a home occupation in front of us, we have a commercial. Development proposal in front of us.
Correct, correct. Yep.
So, I I just wanna clarify, your interpretation is that we do not need a shoreline zoning permit to review this.
We've got it, we, the the, Mac, the fact that we got assigned. Uh, application saying that the, you know, the people's in the shoreline, shoreline zoning is approved. Was approved, so we don't have to go through that again.
Correct, but we got it for the home occupation, is what I'm saying, we didn't get it for the commercial. The whole point is that. The the commercial proposal in front of us is beyond the home occupation.
How so?
Beyond the home occupation, then. Then the, then a permit for the home occupation is not equivalent. I I mean, that's just my interpretation, but Peter, George, Pete, Greg, I mean, if you guys wanna move on, we'll move on. I'll I'll make this argument later.
Wow.
You know.
No attorneys will, Mac.
Let's go.
Okay, so so I guess I would just wanna weigh in that, so this is complicated, right? So. What this commercial application for is looking for any other um permits. I think for the submission requirements, that which is in. Um, exhibit Y fulfills that need because of an existing home occupation that was permitted back in two thousand and eight. That's the way I'm interpreting what's being presented in front of us.
I quote, like, ten years, so.
Does that make sense?
To me, it does.
So, um, Mac's actually got me thinking here that I may have grabbed the wrong end of the stick. Because the question he's asking is a different question. Regardless of the permit that was issued in the past, for the proposal that's before us today. Is a shoreline zoning permit required for that portion within the shoreline zone? A port, a portion of this project clearly is. So if you look at the shoreline zoning ordinance on page twenty five. What permits are required for a home occupation are significantly different or are different than for a commercial application. So in limited uh. Commercial, a commercial enterprise is um required to get a planning board approval. A home occupation is only required to get a code enforcement officer approval.
Well, that one in front of the planning board, it's all signed by planning board members.
That's true. Except that it was for a home occupation. The application was.
Exactly, and and that's what we're still doing. We're trying to convert based on a uh a judgment consent order. We're just doing what we've been asked to do, George, at great expense, I might add.
No, I I certainly appreciate that, Sean, um.
But if I didn't have to spend the money, I wouldn't.
Hard to hear you, Mandy.
Yeah, what's wrong, Mandy?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Sorry, I had my headset plugged in. Um, so if if a existing business sold and another business. Came in, would would they require a new shoreline zoning if it was already zoned for that?
Well, here's, here's the whole thing, it is, this is, this is why I'm. Look, Peter, if if you wanna move on, you mo- will move on, but here's the whole thing. I thought. The whole reason we're doing this is that. The applicant had a home occupation permit to do home occupation stuff. They moved beyond that to commercial level stuff, no longer home occupation stuff. If they move to commercial level stuff, that's the obligation we have in front of us, it's commercial level stuff. So a home occupation permit. Only covers home occupation stuff, not commercial level stuff. What we have in front of us is a commercial application. So it's totally different than a, than a home occupation application. We've already agreed, gone through the attorney and everything, home occupation, everything they wanna do relative to the home occupation, they can do. That's not a problem. What we have in front of us is a commercial application. So for a commercial application, we need permits. If necessary, for said commercial application. If we have a permit for the home occupation, it doesn't apply to the commercial application in front of us. That's the home occupation permit, not the commercial application permit. That thing that was issued in two thousand and eight is for stuff that was done in two thousand and eight. The whole reason we're here is that stuff being done now is beyond the scope of what was done in two thousand and eight.
So I think i- if. I I guess I need some clarification, I'd like some clarification on what the shoreline zoning permit is. Is it something that carries through from business to business? If if um Dave's Real Estate, for example, that used to be a pizza place. Did they have, did they apply for a new shoreline zoning application when they opened their real estate? I guess that's a Gary question. Does it go with the property or the 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 business, or is it based on zoning?
The question is, the question is not whether the the permit carries through or not. The whole point is that that home occupation permit is for certain activities.
I'm not talking about the home occupation, I'm talking about the shoreline zoning component, which is what was in place in two thousand and eight. That Mr. Seal was talking about, that that's, that and and Mr. Alexander were saying that that is what was in place for shoreline zoning permit in two thousand and eight. But is that attached to the property, or is it attached to the business? Is it attached to, you know, in the initial meeting, it sounded like that what, that that was sufficient because it went to the planning board. Before, it's not necessarily limited to, so so for example, like I said, if. The real estate um business. On the stream here. When they opened up to, and it was a a commercial or a pizza place before that, do they, do they have to apply for a new shoreline zoning? Or is it already zoned for commercial activity? Does the, does the zoning go with the business? Like, we're mixing permit and shoreline zoning.
I, it's any change of use, if you change the use, you need a permit for the change of use.
So did, did, do those businesses get new permits? It seems like the planning board would be aware of that process. It's, it seems like this is a new process, which is confusing me.
So, George, would you hand up?
Yeah, um. I I can't answer Samantha's uh question in in terms of uh. If somebody got a permit before I was on the board, but uh certainly. That business didn't get any permits after I came onto the board, um, the uh, but the. We need to refocus on what's important here and relevant. Um, the application that was submitted in two thousand and eight was for a home occupation only. Nothing more, nothing less for boat repairs. And um although, and and that's clear on the application form itself. Uh, and it's uh fairly clear in um. In the uh minutes as well, although the minutes leave a lot to be desired. Um, the, so the question is, are we, what's before us more than a home occupation? Within the shoreline zone, not what's outside the shoreline zone, that's irrelevant. In, for this particular discussion. Now, the definition in our shoreline zoning uh ordinance for commercial use. And I'm gonna read it, is on page seventy six for the board members that wanna look it up. The use of lands, buildings, or structures other than a home occupation. So it's something above and beyond a home occupation. And defined below, the intent and result of which activity is the production of income from the buying and selling of goods or services, etc. Um, the, so. My understanding of the application before us is to allow, among other things, more employees than just two. Two is the limit on a home occupation. So we're being asked to prove something, a commercial use, not a home occupation. I think that's the relevant fact, uh pertinent uh item here in in this discussion about whether yet another. Shoreline zoning uh permit is required. And I, by the way, I would appreciate hearing from Gary on this too, I I would like to know what his opinion is.
Hey, uh, George, I had a question, page seventy six, I haven't looked at it, but. The, who has the authority to approve that? You know, the board has to approve it or the code enforcement officer?
Um, in this zone, it would be the board.
So let me just make sure I'm 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 hearing Pete's question correctly. You asking for a home occupation approval?
No, no, on the uh, the in the page seventy six on the shoreline zoning, right?
You're talking about a commercial application?
A commercial application.
In a limited commercial district?
Yeah. Who who got the authority on on that one? Planning board or code enforcement officer, on the chat, there's a chat there, you're looking at, George, right?
Yeah, it's the planning board.
Planning board, so just for everybody's awareness, it's on page twenty five in the shoreline zone.
But I thought George is page seventy six.
He was talking about the definition, the chart.
Okay.
About, is on a different page.
All right. That's the chat, all right, okay.
So we're all reading from the same page, that's all. So George, you bring up a very interesting point. As if the commercial application that's in front of us is looking to employ more than two people. Which I think that's what it is.
It allows it, it doesn't necessarily mean that you would.
And, and just to be clear, the way that that, George, we were talking about the home occupation, if this exceeds the two employee sort of. Would I say threshold? employee sort of, let us say, threshold, right?
Right up to, that's part of the definition of home occupation.
And and just not to muddy the waters, but make sure I'm stating this clearly and please tell me if I'm going down the wrong path. Home occupation definition on page eighty, right? Number two.
Page eighty of what?
Oh, I'm sorry. Page eighty, I'm looking in the in the short shoreline zone ordinance. Definition section. It says um home occupation, that it says the occupation or profession, which is goes on to for a little bit, then it has two items, number one and number two. Number two reads which employs no more than two persons other than family members residing in the home. So let me just say this out loud. So if we're talking no more than two, if the people residing in the home say they are two and they work in that business, they have two employees, would that not be four people as employees? For example.
So what do you, what do you, are you lost me, Pete? What are you trying to get at on that? And the home occupation, it it can have no more than two employees, right?
Other than the family members.
Family members, yeah. So you have seven family members working there. So theoretically, you could have two employees and seven family members.
One half of a second, would you please? Me and my wife are both heavily involved in this business. We have two guys now. We would like to have four. Hang with me there, bro.
I don't I don't think that's it. This is even relevant, really. The the question is, do we need, if we're applying for a commercial permit, obviously, more employees are allowed in the commercial permit. Doesn't matter what we want to do or what we don't want to do. What matters is, are we do we need to do a separate shoreline zoning application? I mean, we've tried to do everything that the board has asked us to do. It's just, it's it's getting very frustrating to keep spending this money and being asked for different things. And just sort of be the testing site, you know, it'd be nice if we had some clarity. And, you know, I understand it's a confusing situation, but let's try to stay focused, you know, so we can, you know, we've got our engineer on the clock. It's not cheap.
Agreed. We want to work that way. We do, definitely. Okay, yes, George, go ahead.
I I would say uh that um Samantha has summed it up quite nicely and uh I've come to the opinion that a shoreline zoning uh application would also be needed in addition to this commercial development review ordinance uh application. The one, the latter does not negate the need for the the first.
So if the if the planning board could provide exactly what is necessary to go through that process to the engineer, that would be appreciated in sort of a succinct way without all the extraneous stuff.
Okay. Alright, so the application shows us there's the commercial site is involved in or is part is in the shoreline zone. George, that's where you're getting to the idea that the shoreline zone permit would also be uh needed in this case. Is that what you're?
Yes.
Basis? And Mac, are you?
That's my personal opinion.
But, yes, I agree. At the beginning, they need a shoreline zoning permit.
Yep, thank you. Pete, do you see where this is, where they're getting that from?
Yes, now we've discussed it and it's clearer. Yes, it does require a shoreline permit.
Thank you. Craig, do you see where we're going with this?
Yeah, I see where you're going with it.
Alright. So, um, and I'm in agreement. I think that based on this information the shoreline zone permit would be needed in this case. How can we help the applicants understand what is needed to get this done?
Well, I, the, this kind of goes back to the beginning where where I said, I want clarity in terms of what is home occupation, what is commercial development review? If we know what is home occupation and what was done and with what buildings and with what driveway, whatever, then we can say that's already permitted. Let's not worry about it. We don't care. Then, in the shoreline zoning application, just like in this commercial development review application, we should have clarity in exactly what we're asking for. Are we asking for a new building? Are we asking for a new driveway? Are we asking for an expanded building? Are we asking for expanded storage area? What are we asking for that makes this a commercial development versus a home occupation? Uh, until we know that, we can't judge that it is a commercial development being permitted. Do you see what I'm saying?
So I can tell you, if you read back, if you read the agreement that we um have with the attorney, the two things that we we agreed that we specified exceeded the scope of the permit was plain boat storage and boat rentals, boat tours. We're not doing boat tours anymore. There um in in review with Mr. Attorney Hodgkins, you know, there there's it would be remiss to say that we couldn't have boats there for repair. And he said, he agreed that boats on the property being repaired over the winter would be legitimately permissible in under a home-based boat repair, varnish, painting business. So that's a whole separate can of worms that we probably don't want to go down the road on on this. There's, you know, it's arguable whether the the town should have issued, what knowing what we know now, a home-based permit for a boat repair shop. Um, but that's, that's, you know, if this isn't um if the commercial application is not approved, that's a, that's a whole nother set of details.
So I I think that's a very good point. And and I did read the consent agreement and and that's, that's exactly what I'm
So there's straight boat storage without just straight boat storage without a repair, re- restoration component, which is what we'd like to do. But many of the boats we have on the property are for repair. And
Sorry.
And then the ability, obviously, to employ additional people if we saw fit. And um, you know, to utilize the storage space. And and to do boat rentals. But however, if this commercial application isn't successful, it was also concurred that because the majority of boat rentals are done online um or over the phone, that would be consistent with a home-based business. So there's nothing um according to the town's attorney that would prevent us from applying for inclusion of those services under the home-based business permit.
So I I I
I just tried to give you some clarity.
Okay, thank you. I just looked at the 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 consent agreement and it says to the extent those uses exceed the scope of the two thousand eight home occupation permit, right?
Which is for, which is for boat repair and things consistent with boat repair, which would include boat repair, paint and varnish, which would include having boats on site to be repaired.
Right, which I totally agree with. But, and and here's, so I'm trying to understand ag- again, exactly what makes this a commercial and not the home occupation. So I went to the definition. The definition of a home occupation is an occupation, this is a definition out of the commercial development review ordinance, right? It says, an occupation carried on in a dwelling unit or accessory building, which is clearly incidental and secondary to the residential use of the dwelling.
My point exactly, which which would also support the fact that it's questionable whether the two thousand eight permit should have been a home-based uh permit to start with. So there's very little differentiation from what's being done now as a commercial permit, but that's a, that is irrelevant at this point.
Right.
Because we've settled on that agreement and what can be done under the home-based occupation permit if this permit is not successful is still up for nego- for debate. Because there are some things that would be consistent with a home boat repair shop, which is what the permit are for, which would not fall under the current definition of a home-based business, despite the fact that the town did issue a permit.
So
Can I help you?
Yeah, like exactly how much, so so if I read the home occupation definition, it says to me something clearly incidental, operated out of the garage or whatever, clearly incidental to the residential. So if I just look at that, I look at that and say, this is a boat repair shop doing a couple boats. Not a big deal, not gonna mess with the neighborhood, right? Clearly incidental to the residential character of the neighborhood.
So I will add a little more, wait, one one moment. Clarity from our last round with Superior Court was that definition was further expanded that a home-based business should not be discernible from the street. It should be located in the home, should not be discernible from the street, which is not consistent with a boat repair shop. And, you know, that's I, all I'm saying is that that, that the context of what is happening now is separate from what, you know, you have to, you have to you can't separate and say what is permissible under a home-based business, because that's not, that's not really what we're doing now is not really part of this application. If the application fails, if we don't get commercially applied, then we'll, of course, have to revisit that.
So that that does honestly clarify and help me, because all I have is, again, what's in front of me? And that's, that's what I'm basing my decisions on. And if it's not in front of me, then I'm confused. So I really appreciate you being here and explaining that, and that's great and that's wonderful. But again, i- if it's in, i- if it's part of the application ahead of time and and clear, you know, then then we can avoid this and so so this is, so
But what happened with the home-based business can't be part of this application. It's irrelevant.
Right, right, right. But so I'm trying to think of what makes it a commercial, right? And I think of the amount of boat repair, but what you're telling me now is that the amount of boat repair that happened in two thousand eight probably was beyond the scope of a home occupation. I didn't know that.
Probably.
Right, I didn't know that. I just went by the definition of a home occupation thinking they probably did three or four boats or whatever, something clearly incidental. If that's not the case, then, you know, I totally agree with what you're saying, you know, that that's sort of a a- a- another tangent, another discussion. And so that helps. Another thing that that I was thinking in terms of home occupation versus commercial, right? The home occupation says it's gonna operate out of a the existing thirty-two by forty-eight garage. Right? So that's clearly said on the home occupation, the thirty-two by forty-acre garage. But on the
Which isn't the residence, by the way.
What?
Which isn't the home, by the way.
Right, it's not the home. I agree, I agree. But according to the site plan, there's a second building, right? And I measured the size of that building and it's approximately thirty by sixty-five. So it's, it's
Which building are you?
I I'm looking at the the, not not your house, but your boat repair shop, right? So in the, in the land use, in the site plan, it's sized thirty by sixty-five approximately, not thirty-two by forty-eight. So
I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think that's correct. I think it hasn't changed.
So that's part of my, that's part of my confusion. Is I was wondering if part of the reason this is in front of us is that somewhere along the way the repair building was expanded. And if so, that expansion needs to be considered for shoreline zoning permit.
So with the thirty by sixty-five, so if you didn't pull into the driveway, how are you able to measure the shop that we're working out of currently?
I'm looking at the site plan.
Being the shop that we're working out of repairing boats and doing the things we're talking about right now.
Mac, I built a building fifteen, eighteen years ago. The main structure is thirty-two by forty-eight. The overhang off the end heading towards the south has been there since day one, and I defy you to prove differently.
I'm, I I'm, I'm just telling you what I have in front of me. The home occupation permit says thirty-two by forty-eight. The site plan measures thirty by sixty-five.
That play in the uh conversation right now?
I'm sorry?
What difference does that play in the conversation right now? It's all impervious, correct?
Because if you expand a building, then that would be, then the home occupation is thirty-two by forty-eight. The commercial application is an expansion of that thirty-two by forty-eight, and therefore the expansion would be part of the consideration for shoreline zoning.
For any new development with
And there hasn't been.
Okay, if there hasn't been, if there hasn't been
There hasn't been. I said we are asking for no new development upon what we have done, uh upon what we have asked for. Shit, I'm done.
I I may be able to add a little bit to this. The uh, the dimensions of the building were ones that we pulled off aerial photographs. So I think that's consistent with what Sean was saying earlier about having the building with the overhang. The footprint may be thirty-two by forty-eight, uh but the uh aerial presentation from the roof could be the thirty-two by sixty-five or whatever, and that's just an overhang on the end. So I I I think we're, we're saying the same thing, whether you look at the footprint or the aerial view of it. So that's that that may help where the uh sixty-five foot dimension came in.
Okay, see, that's great, because you had asked what does a planning board want the engineer to do in terms of applying for a shoreline zoning permit? And given the dimensions I just said, I would have said, well, you need to ask for an expansion of your boat repair shop structure, right? Because it was thirty-two by forty-eight, now it's by sixty-five. But what you're saying is, it's the exact same building. There's just a misinterpretation of the overhang or whatever. So I'm gonna say there's no structure expansion that you need to apply for in your shoreline zoning application. Does that make sense? Yeah? I I'm not, I'm not trying, I honestly, I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just trying to reconcile discrepancies so that I know exactly what I'm, wha- wha- what I'm looking at.
Thanks, Mac. It's it's good stuff. George?
Peter, I think to move the ball forward, I think we should have a vote on whether or not a shoreline zoning permit application is required. The, uh, I'm of the opinion it still is required if indeed the applicant wishes to have more than two employees and therefore take it from a home-based business, which was approved in two thousand and therefore take it from a home-based business, which was approved in 2008, to something more than that. Um. You know, I, I don't, I agree with, uh, you know, that there's been no expansion, uh, that that's fine, you know, um, but there's more to it than whether or not there's been an expansion of the building or not.
Okay, so, um, so Jeff Allen can, if you can help answer that question, but if what the applicants are looking for is the, uh, commercial application, which may allow them to employ more than two people wanted to, right? If that's what they wanted to, it sounds like what we are looking at, it, because we had general consensus, we haven't made a motion yet though, but if that's the direction to go, um, I think what we'll be looking for is a, is the approval of a shoreline zone application in addition to this one. Does that make sense?
It does to me, but I think if I, I, uh, Mrs. Grant made a, an important point. If the, uh, commercial permit is not approved, then they don't need a shoreline zoning change. And they just won't be able to employ additional workers.
Correct.
So I think it has to be done, in, in my mind, would have to be done sequentially, that you'd have to first approve the um, commercial development permit, and then bring it back for an additional, uh, shoreline zoning permit. Because otherwise it's, it's moot and, and I'm trying to save them some money, believe it or not.
Yeah, I hear you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks. So I'm turning to the planning board members, um. Typically, there's sometimes an intersection between ordinances. In this case, are, are, we looking at Jeff Allen's, thinking about doing things sequentially, so commercial application approval first, and if not, then go to, for the, or if approved, then go for the shoreline zone application for this one. And I think what, well, I don't wanna speak for others, but I'm, I'm curious if we are thinking that in order to approve the commercial application, we would first need, or in addition, need a shoreline zone application approved. George?
Yeah, Peter, you, you summed that up correctly. Uh, I mean, that's how we've always handled it in the past, that, uh, if another town permit was issued, that's a prerequisite for us to be able to issue the commercial development review ordinance permit. Um, this is more complex, um, and has, uh, and, and I guess I would be amenable to showing some flexibility here in terms of process where, um, we could, uh, I mean, I'm getting ahead of myself here, but, uh, we could run the commercial development review, uh, permit through the process under that ordinance, the commercial development review ordinance. And, um, and potentially, uh, rather than doing it all at the same time, but doing it sequentially as, as Mr. Allen suggested, um, say, let's say we approve the, approve this application, we could approve it with a condition that, uh, uh, of, uh, obtai- obtaining a shoreline zoning, uh, permit. If we deny it, then the shoreline zoning permit application is moved, as I understand it from this, you know, the, the approach that the applicant would take.
And I would agree with that approach, because, again, you know, the residents of Belgrade and stuff, these ordinances and this, you know, same as we're trying to keep the subdivision ordinance, so it doesn't just cost enormous amounts of money that has very little impact. Um, so yes, I would agree to go through with the commercial in that order, then do a condition, just like you said. So they know whether or not it's gonna pass. I mean, there's no sense of getting a shoreline. This information is mostly right here. And, you know, so why, why send them through another car, round of cost before we even know it's gonna pass them on?
Okay, thanks, Craig. Mac and Pete, um, Pete, you're on mute?
Pete, you're still on mute? No, I, I somehow or another, I keep getting put on mute, mute. I got a little bug in here someplace. Anyways, I've been listening. All right, so I, I, let's go with, uh, what, uh, George and, uh, Craig has said, I agree, so let's, let's go, go that way.
Mac, can you, can you, uh, agree with that approach?
I can, I agree. I think it makes sense.
I think it's, thank you, Mac. I, I think it's a good way to go, um, in terms of, uh, trying to not have this be more costly for the applicants as it already is. So if we can somehow do this in such a way that still provides them guidance, still allows us to have a condition of approval, if it should be approved, um, then we'll have a way to do that. So let's, let's proceed. So going back procedurally, um, George, originally, uh, you had mentioned, you know, the idea that perhaps a motion for a shoreline zone permit being needed.
Maybe we don't need that now, since we have clearly a consensus.
Okay.
I mean, up to you, uh, I, I was just trying to get the ball rolling.
Yep, thank you. I, I, I'm, I'm fine with that, and I think we have consensus, so I'd like to move ahead if that's okay. So, uh, so having said that, knowing some things that are in play for this, uh, where are we in terms of, um, the checklist?
Well, I think in terms of this one item, copies of other required state and local permits, I think, uh, my suggestion would be to mark that as complete and put a footnote saying, uh, contingent on, uh, a, um, uh, obtaining a shoreline zoning permit, if and when that's required.
Okay, so, so for that, for that chi- for that particular item on the checklist?
Yes.
Way, okay. All right, so, um, Gary, um, I guess I'm gonna, if you could, don't mind helping support this idea, that Julie, please mark that as so, as Gear, as George talked about, and Gear, if you could help reinforce that, please. And Mac, your hand is up, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I, I totally agree. However, I guess I would be more comfortable if instead of marking it as complete, we mark it as not applicable with the note, because they, they haven't actually done it. It's not complete. We didn't vote on their, you know, we didn't, it's not completed. We don't think it's necessary until such time as we find it necessary, but.
I think they're saying for the application going forward, it's complete. The notation is for after, it's contingent on the final application being approved.
And I would just note, again, that they have provided the other local permit that, that they already have.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
Okay, thank you. All right, so for that line item on the checklist, um, we, I think, understanding there. Now for the checklist as a whole, are there gaps?
I, I'm sorry, Peter, wha- what is your question?
So for the checklist as a whole, because what we're supposed to do is determine completeness, right?
Right.
Um, if the checklist still has gaps, um, I'm thinking we'd be incomplete. If it has no gaps, we, maybe we could look towards determining if this was complete or not.
Yeah, and unfortunately, the form itself just gives us three options, complete, not applicable, or waiver, uh, approved, um. If, if you'd prefer, I, I could just leave that blank and add some, a- add the verbiage that I mentioned, that would basically say, uh, see exhibit Y for existing permit and a shoreline zoning permit will be applied for under a condition of approval if necessary.
I, i- i- if you're worried about me, you convinced me that you can check complete and, and add your stuff, so.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Thanks, let's do that. All right. So if that's the case, then, then the checklist box for that record, um, that particular thing, it has a complete mark in it with a notation that we're gonna have as part of it, right? Then, as a whole, in the checklist, are there missing items that we still need from the, from the applicant?
Yes, or that we need to discuss.
Okay, so let's discuss.
Were incomplete as of our first meeting. Uh, there's a, a number still that we have yet to, uh, discuss.
Can we get to those then? Let's, let's hit them.
Yep. So the next item is the site development plan. And, uh, and there were, uh, a number of items, uh, on the list, uh, uh, in the right-hand column that were missing. Um, the, um, last time, uh, that have, uh, most of which have been submitted. Uh, one was location extent of disturbed area, that is now shown. Uh, dimensions of impervious surfaces, that's shown. Parking, that is shown. Um, location of existing vegetation to be retained, that's shown. Um, others can disagree with me, but that, that's my interpretation. The one item that's not shown, but is the subject of the waiver request, is screening along public roads. So that should be held, sort of, uh, aside, I would, I would guess, um.
Yep.
Uh, the, uh, license in, uh, and professional stamp, that is now shown. The only thing that, uh, and maybe I just missed it, was, uh, the subsurface wastewater disposal system. Uh, I didn't see that on the site plan.
Mr. Allen, do we have that? And just so you know, Jeff, you're on mute.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Um, I think, uh, I, I don't see it on the site plan. However, I believe it's addressed in the narrative that it's behind the house, uh, so it, if the narrative would suffice until I can revise the site plan, we could move on with this.
But, um, all right, so what do we just need is shown on there, because that's a residential, that has nothing to do with what they're applying for, because they're using a porta potty.
Right.
Back, and we had the discussion of the porta potty earlier.
Right, and I, I, I promise we'll move the porta potty so you can't see it from the road. That's in there in writing as well.
Yeah, I wasn't mentioning anything about that, but do we need to show the subsurface, subsurface wastewater for the residents? Is that what you're asking for?
Um.
Was it having anything to do with the business?
Yeah, i- if it, if it doesn't serve the office, for example, which is part of the application, uh, then I, I would agree with you.
Oh, the office is part of the house, so.
Yeah, but that's, I think, the work, all the, that's part of the home, because it's a, where it's the home occupation. And so the, um, all the workers that come onto the site, and presumably the new workers, if they hire in excess of the two employees they have now, would use the porta potty.
That is correct. Much to their chagrin.
Um, particularly this time of year.
I don't like it.
Um, I, I, I'm, you know, not arguing the point, I, I'm just going what's in the application. And the, I, I interpreted the application to include the office.
I do agree with Craig, we did have this, sort of have this discussion about the porta potty. A- and I don't think, I, 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 my understanding was at the last meeting that sufficed.
I do recall that discussion clearly, we had the discussion about the porta potty, um. Because that, if I understand it right, that is what servicing the, any of the employees that would be coming on to work in this, uh, commercial endeavor.
Correct.
That's what I understood. Um, so the question to the board is, uh, is that narrative captured anywhere? And is it sufficient if it is somewhere? I think Mr. Allen said it was a note, noted somewhere on the site plan, is that right?
I, I'm not sure if it's noted on the site plan, it's somewhere in this, in this book, and I.
It, it is noted in the application, in the amended application.
Okay.
I, I can't locate it at this point, but.
That's okay. Um, so if it's noted in the application and it's clear that that's what it's for, is the board okay with that aspect of, of how waste would be treated through a?
Outhouse, okay, yeah, it's fine, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Um. I'm good with that, it makes sense to me, um.
I, I'm fine with it as well. I, I just wanna be clear, though, is the office part of this application or not? I thought it would, the office was part of the overall business.
Office is part of the business, but is it primarily part of the home occupation, because it's attached to the home? It gets back into the gray area of, of, you know, certainly the home office, they don't want the employees tromping through the house, go to the bathroom. Um, but the office, um, if they're using the office, uh, they probably are still required to go to the porta potty. I, I don't know the.
That is correct.
Yes.
Sorry, JT. Sorry, man.
Bring your heater.
Yep, thank you.
Peter, for, for what it's worth, my vote is that, um, it's, it's part of the home occupation and therefore not part of this application. So I don't think it's necessary.
Understood, thank you, George. Does that help address the answers that we got from Jeff and Samantha and JT, I think?
I believe so, which would mean that the site plan is complete.
Okay, thank you. So. So that, wha- what other items, um, did we go through last time that needed more information?
We have, uh, if you want me to give you a count, we got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
And items? We better get after it then.
I agree. Um. Next item is, uh, detail to scale, uh, well, the next item, uh, that was missing last time, unless Mac has something in advance of this, was the soil erosion control plan. Uh, that has since been submitted, so I would recommend we mark that as complete.
I would agree.
I'm gonna keep on going until somebody stops me.
Please do.
Um, main DEP certified contractor name, uh, the application makes it clear that that will be provided at a later date, once they get to the construction phase. So that could be handled with, um, so I would say that's complete, even though we'll probably need a condition to, um, make sure it's enforceable.
Uh. I agree.
The next item that was missing last time was information needed to meet access to public street standard. Uh, there's now information in the application about site distances, um. Uh, so I, I would recommend that that be marked complete.
I agree.
If anybody disagrees, be sure to stop me. Um, next item is estimated quantities of flammable combustible and hazardous substances to be stored, handled, or generated, including waste oil and antifreeze. And, uh, that is now, uh, provided in, uh, exhibit X. So I would mark that complete.
Agreed.
Um, the next item is evidence meets DEP citing regulations for oil storage and hazardous substance facilities. Um, that is also provided, um. That is also provided, I believe, in Exhibit X. Correspondence with DEP indicating that those regulations don't apply and the facility is grandfathered. So that would be complete.
Agreed.
Copy of the application provided to the fire chief by planning board or code enforcement officer. That that's been done. That was done by Anthony, I believe, or Gary. I can't remember which after the last meeting. Then I'm moving over to the next page. Information to meet the parking standards. The in the amended application, we have peak hourly traffic figures now and also on the site plan, the parking spaces are shown. The five five parking spaces are shown, which we didn't have last time, so I would recommend marking that complete.
Agreed.
One item that the next item I would suggest we tie in with the discussion of the waiver request pending the outcome of that. The information to meet screening of structures, parking lots, and other non-residential uses. That's the subject of the waiver request, so I would leave that blank for now.
Okay.
The another item has had to do with the signs. We I let's see. Other information to meet sign standard. The dimensions of the signs have now been provided, which was lacking last time. So I would mark that as complete.
Thank you. Good.
The next item that was missing last time was a stormwater management plan, and that has been provided in Exhibit R.
Excellent. Good.
Other information to meet stormwater management standard. I wouldn't quite sure. I I guess I we should discuss this a little bit. There are some things that one item that that is missing. In particular, and required by the ordinance for an engineered system is a maintenance plan. I didn't see that in the application, the amended application.
I don't believe there's anything to maintain. That maintenance plans are usually associated with structures, if I'm not mistaken. And we're not proposing any structures. What what should we maintain?
Grass. The integrity of the plastic.
Okay. Okay, I can I can come up with some discussion of that.
I mean, it may be my only thought was maybe nothing more than an annual inspection to make sure the grass isn't dead.
Yeah, and that I could that be done by the code enforcement officer? And bring a cup of coffee?
Is that something? Is that typical? I'm asking Jeff, is that is that typical for a maintenance plan? You do this for a living, is that?
I've never seen it with main DEP stormwater regulations do require maintenance of structures. And they have a five-year time that they go in and look at the overall maintenance of structures and mowing and if there are you know, woody debris growing in the banks of stormwater ponds and stuff like that, it's not. You know, there there are other instances where DEP has asked for a maintenance plan and they, you know, every year they'll go in mow the grass or adjust level spreaders or the like. So DEP has precedent for this. I've never haven't seen any other towns do this, though.
Is this something that, you know, I'm asking George, I realize, and and Peter, is this something that's extraordinary for our application in attempt to be thorough?
Well, on the time I've been on the plane board, this is the first time we've had an engineer stormwater system, management system proposed. And and others have always relied on the use of buffers or infiltration areas. So and I was just trying to find the exact wording for you. The on the stormwater, oh, here it is. Yeah, for projects involving structural treatments, a stormwater maintenance, well, they they the ordinance calls it an agreement must be submitted at the time of the application. The agreement must indicate how stormwater facilities will be maintained through the course of projected life. So, you know, if that doesn't maintain, then it doesn't work. If it doesn't work, you don't meet the stormwater and the phosphorus standard.
Right. The yeah, the only thing you could do is maintain is is make sure the grass is growing. The structures are crush proof, you know, you're not you're not going to. I don't know what you do other than you you can't fertilize them because you don't want, you know, any phosphorous runoff. So it's just making making sure the grass grows. How how do I put that in language to?
Hello, may I may I say something? All right, so regarding the grass for the grass to grow, you you can get non you know, phosphorus type fertilizers like seaweed. You can get that stuff and put it in for fertilizer makes the grass grow. Just so I thought. There's nothing new about that.
I I my point is, I'm just asking Jeff in front of the planning board, is this is something that's normally requested? Because a a number of times in this process in our past process, we were asked to do something by the town that didn't turn out to be you know, the town's interpretation. It was somewhat out of their area, so completely understanding. But it turned out that that wasn't the intent of the ordinance or the DEP's requirement, and we spent a fair bit of money doing that. So I want to make sure that the planning board is absolutely sure that this is something that's applicable and necessary before we pay the engineer to do something, or is it just another, you know?
I might add, Mr. Seal's definition earlier. It talks about structures. Structures to me imply something like a filter pond, a wet pond, a detention pond of some sort, or you know, something that's built solely for the purpose of of stormwater maintenance. Growing grass isn't. I I've never seen that mandated before. Doesn't mean you can't, but it's just unusual.
Thank you, Jeff. Mac.
So I my understanding is you're going to install reinforced turf as a pervious surface. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so my experience is anytime and and engineered or another, as you just said, structure is put in place, there is a way to maintain said structure. So if all you're doing is growing grass, then I agree, it doesn't make sense to have maintenance. However, you are putting in something beyond just growing grass. You are putting something in. If you are putting something in a reinforced turf turf system, then said system has maintenance applicable to it. That's not, that's not strange.
Okay.
Well, what?
The what do they have for a maintenance plan for the where the farmer's market is? Because that's a reinforced turf situation up there. I don't know what they do for maintenance.
Personally, I don't know because I don't even know if that came to the planning board, but.
It did. It was passed and a number of
I do. I do know, Jeff, the stormwater manual specifies for that kind of pervious pavement. A maintenance, you know, a maintenance plan. And I I will add that and I I hopefully you saw my exchange with Dave Waddell at DEP. He certainly considers reinforced reinforced turf a type of of rather than a simple non-engineered system, engineered type of system.
Yeah, I did. Actually, I was very encouraged to see that. Did Julie for you do the response that I had to that? I commented on Mr. Waddell's letter or email and was quite.
I happen to see. I personally happened to see that email right before it came on the meeting. I didn't get a chance to read it.
Okay, yeah, it's the structure underneath of it is is stoned. If you believe it's necessary, I can come up with a maintenance plan, but it'll involve mowing or watering.
That's fine.
But you know, it's it's not, there's not much else you can do to it to make grass grow and it's the structure is is a firmer turf. That's all it is. That you can do stuff on top of rather than sink into the mud.
I just asked that the planning board hold, you know, it it there's examples of this being used that we be held to the same level of standards as other businesses and commercials.
Understood. Thank you, Mac.
Yeah, I I totally agree. I'm.
But is it fair to say that we learn and grow?
Thank you, Mac.
Yeah, so I my, I guess my point, I agree with George. And you know, I think Jeff, I I don't think we need something terribly complex and you know, another another section or whatever in in the booklet here. I think the whole point is if you are, if you are putting in place a system for which you argue in the application that that system is going to reduce phosphorus and you want to take credit for reduction in phosphorus given that system, right? And you want to argue that that system allows you to meet stormwater standards. Then there has to be something in place to say that system will in fact function continuously. Because if that system doesn't function, then then the credit can't be taken. And so no credit is given for just grass, you know, you're putting in something over and above what exists on the ground. And you're taking credit for that. And so you just need to put in writing some some system that says, we recognize we're getting credit, we're doing a good thing, we're reducing phosphorus. We want to make sure that reduction in phosphorus is going to be continuous. This is how. And if it's just a paragraph saying how it's going to be functioning continuously by doing, you know, a couple of sentences worth of maintenance every year, then that's fine. There just needs to be acknowledgement and everybody recognizing through this acknowledgement that that is a system that is for lack of a better word, a system that needs to be paid attention to.
Thank you. Good summary.
Yeah, I can write a paragraph to describe how to maintain that system.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll leave that blank for the moment. The next item that I don't know if this was a mistake on my part or a mistake on all our parts last at the last meeting, but it has to do with other information to meet the waste standards. I had it marked as not applicable. It clearly is applicable based on the inventory, but I I, you know, based on the photo and and some items in the application talking about the secondary containment for the waste oil and waste gasoline. I would suggest that be marked as complete.
I would agree. Mac, you have a comment?
Yeah, I I I I think what's there, I agree, is is complete. I guess I would think I would be more comfortable if I remember you said at that first meeting that I missed, there's a discussion about hiring Jennifer Jespersen and having her work with DEP on on what you need to do for that stuff, right? And so I guess I would want to see the communication from Jennifer Jespersen saying, this is what this is what we're doing through DEP. Or this is what DEP recommends, and this is what the applicant is doing. So that it's in writing that the that the waste is taken care of properly.
Mac, we have been doing that according to to regulation for years. We're now 12 years in. We have handled gas and and oil exactly as we should be. Jen can exemplify to you that our oil sits on top of containment barrels that are 120% of the of the volume above. I mean.
Jen has come out and reviewed it and I was, you know, made the recommendations.
Mac, we do it right. I don't know why you're so in a tight bright side, but we do it right.
So so thanks, Sean. I I think what he's looking for is just some clarification or or making sure that the data is submitted as part of this application, I believe. That's that's what I'm interpreting.
It's Jeff and his firm has not given you everything they needed. Possibly they I neglected to give them everything they needed to have. That's probably the case. But guys, we're just sitting here with all our eggs out here on on the table and
I I know.
I'm sorry, I I get I get stressed out over this. This is hard for me.
It it's hard for all of us, Sean. It is a complicated thing and we're trying very hard to get through it. We are. So Jeff, where are we?
I mean, I've shown you or demonstrated by contacting DEP that this doesn't meet the standard or doesn't, this is grandfathered from DEP regulations. And generally, they have good practices. I also included photos that show that there there are those actual containment pallets there. You know, it's in an overhang area. It's, you know, I I don't know what else you need to demonstrate that waste standards are are being met. If you can clarify exactly what you'd like to see, I'd be happy to to work on addressing that, but I'm sort of sort of unclear what I need to do.
George.
Let's refocus on what we're doing here. We're we're determining whether we have a application that's sufficiently complete to move on to the next step. The next step will be getting into the weeds. I I certainly have some questions about what hazardous wastes are generated and how they're being disposed of, but here and now, we're we're just dealing with, has information been submitted that addresses largely addresses this topic? And, you know, there's a photo of the pallet, for example, the secondary containment pallet. There there's a discussion of the wastes that are generated, as Jeff has mentioned, that they are exempt from Chapter 700 and DEP regulations. That's hardly the only regulation that might apply to their operation from DEP in terms of waste handling, but you know, one of the questions I'll be raising later is whether they qualify as a small quantity hazardous waste generator. But for here and now, you know, I I think we should stay focused on the checklist.
Thank you. And that was part of that information was. Thank you. And that was part of, um, that information was submitted as exhibit X, right? That was, we have the, um.
The inventory was, and there's some, uh, verbiage in the application as well.
Yep.
Okay, does any questions that Jeff can't answer while I'm present, feel free to ask to help expedite this process?
Thanks.
George, I, George, I think you said it beautifully.
What's up next?
That's it. We're back to, uh, consideration of the waiver request.
Okay.
From the standards.
Okay. So we set that aside before, right? Thinking that it might be, um, more discussion on this. Where?
Right. And, and of course, you know, if, for example, if we deny the waiver request, then more, more information needs to be submitted on, particularly on the site plan. If we approve, uh, the waiver request, then probably not.
Yeah, if you look, the waiver request is very near the front of the document. And I think actually that, uh, Mr. Seal provided a aerial photo that clearly demonstrates how close uh, the development is and the home is to the road. Uh, and how integral the parking, turning off the road into parking spaces is, is, is also shown on the site plan. So that was the, uh, uh, kind of an issue that, of what the concern was, is that, uh, wouldn't provide screening toward the, to the road. The, uh, photo I included in there shows the, the number of trees along the street in the areas other than specifically in front of the, the business. But, uh, that's, uh, the aerial photo is also included in somewhere in the back of my application as well. In exhibit W, now there's another version of the aerial photo, if, if you don't have Mr. Seal's email.
W, thank you. Both. Okay. So, um, in terms of granting the waiver, what are some, um, concerns, uh, relative to granting the waiver as it was written? Go ahead, George. I'm sorry, I was looking down.
That's fine. Um, a question for Mr. Allen and, and, um, maybe others, but, um, the waiver. So let's go back to what we knew, the plane board knew, uh, at the first meeting. We did not know where the parking spaces were. And, uh, consequently, the discussion we had about screening only focused on whether or not, um, trees should be planted or not. There was no mention of the second, uh, screening requirement in the ordinance for, um, the village district, which this project is in, uh, which would be, um, a law between public roads and, uh, parking areas. Is it, am I, i- i- is this a waiver from that requirement as well? Is that what this request is for? It, it wasn't.
It was my intent. Um, perhaps I didn't choose both sections of the ordinance.
Well, it, in the application, it seemed to be, were, there was a description, it was broader wording, and that's why I, I just wanted to clarify. So i- i- it's for both, both requirements that you're, you know, waiver.
Yes, it should be.
Was that affirmed that they're asking for a waiver for two things?
Yes.
And that would be the planting of additional trees along the front of the property?
Yeah, be- between the public road and, and the project and, uh, also between the parking spaces next to the shop and the Houlin Road. I'm on page 31 of the ordinance if anybody needs to refer to it.
George, I think Craig brought up at that, at the meeting too. I think it was Craig that brought up the issue of plowing if we were to plant trees, that that would be a major impalement.
Right. I, I recall that.
And the potential for that road being expanded.
There's no space for, it's an existing building. And there's just no safe place to do it.
Another question, if I may, Peter.
Yes.
Uh, I didn't see anything in the waiver request, but this was a question I'd asked last time too. If we knew what, uh, how wide the, uh, right of way was and how much that impeded onto the law, front lawn, if you will.
I, I didn't, uh, I recall you saying that now, but I didn't remember it when I was putting the, uh, request together, so I do not have that information.
Yeah, but there obviously is a right of way that you can't plant trees in. Because you're not, yeah. Yeah.
So do we have, um, we clear what was being asked? Cause it sounds like we're not.
My intent is, is to not plant trees there. Whether, what applicable sections of the ordinance that applies to, uh, I'm, I'm happy to have you guys sort out, uh, but, but that's my intent is to not plant trees.
Go ahead, Mac.
I, I think, I guess I'm a little. Personally, I think this is in a village area and it's existing and there's not there. And there's other commercial businesses in the village area that have parking right up front without any screening. I mean, I, personally, I think it makes total sense to grant this waiver. I'm trying to figure out how I can do that, given the confines of the existing ordinance. Because I've made this mistake before, you know, you remember months ago with, uh, development where they wanted to change the use to boat storage down there. And I said, yeah, no problem. Then the town attorney came back and said, hey, you can't do that. And so I, you know, that's one of those things where I think it's, and then, and then it says exceptions to public road screening within the village area. And I would think it would say within the village area, you're great. You're in the village. Why do we need to screen stuff? But it doesn't say that. It says within the village area, you still need to have this stuff. And that kind of doesn't make sense to me. So I'm trying to figure out some way around it. But still meet the letter of the ordinance, you know, like w- w- with that other application, we basically told the applicant, or, you know, I told him, I said, I'd be happy to work with you to try to revise the standard because that's what's holding us up is this, the silly standard. Is that where we're at here? Or can we grant the waiver and still meet the letter of the standard?
Go ahead, George.
Um, I, I, I think it's the latter, Mac. I think we could, um, issue a waiver and, and meet the letter of the ordinance. Uh, the ordinance on page 13 has a, the process to follow, uh, when, and what we should consider when i- issue, uh, considering a waiver request. Uh, and, uh, it, it said, the plane board may vote to waive development standards or submission requirements in the ordinance when it finds one of the following. Uh, and I'm just not going to summarize it. Um, one criteria would be that it's not applicable to the proposal. Uh, another would be, um, the limitations of the circumstances of the site. The second criteria isn't really applicable here. Uh, i- i- it's when an applicant, um, well, uh, anyway, the development where that, where the, there's submitting an alternative design basically to what's specified in the ordinance.
No, I found the page, George. That's awesome. I totally agree. We can totally waive it based on the circumstances of the site and the unique features of the proposed use where they're bringing in boats on trailers and stuff. So I think if we, if we, you know, state that, I think we're fine. I'd be, I'd be for that.
Yep, I agree. So, um, relative to this waiver request, do we have all the information we need to make, uh, determination on whether or not we're going to grant this waiver? Or is there more information that we need to, to help us out?
I think we have all the information.
Thanks, Pete and Craig. I think I heard you say you think we had it all.
Yeah, I believe so, because just the physical distance alone is enough to waive it. And, you know, the business that they run on with the boats and the trailers.
Okay. Thanks, George. Do you feel comfortable with that?
I do.
And Mac, I'm seeing you nod your head. So are we in, at a spot where we could, um, vote on this waiver request? I, I feel comfortable. I'm looking to the planning board. So, okay, if so, I, I would entertain a motion to, uh, grant the waiver request as submitted by the, um, representative for the applicant.
I would make a motion to approve the, uh, waiver request as submitted from section 11C1 uh, of the ordinance regarding screening in the village district.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So a motion, uh, made and seconded and, uh, Mac, uh, be, I just want to be sure we talked this out. So we did so because we looked through the procedure as outlined on section 711, right? So I think we've met everything there, um, on page 13. So.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it, you know, it says we can vote to waive the standard when it finds one of the following. So as long as we have on record that we find something here that, you know, gives us the authority to waive it. I just want to have that.
They have to amend my motion if that, to clarify that, if that would help.
Uh, please do.
So, um, I'll amend my motion to, um, grant the waiver as requested from, um, section of the.
Yeah, 11.
11C1, um, on the basis that, um, not applicable to the, to, uh, site use and conditions.
I got you. So that's been amended. Um, I think proceedsively we'd be looking for a second on the amendment.
Yes.
Okay, amendment.
And seconded. Any more discussion? Okay, uh, all those in favor, I'll do, uh, George?
Yes.
Uh, Craig?
Yes.
Mac?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So five in favor of approving the waiver request and none opposed on the waiver request.
So Peter, uh, as a result of that vote, uh, then on the checklist, uh, the written waiver request would be marked as approved and the, um, information, the item on information to meet the screening structures, waiver, uh, requested and approved would be marked off.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that was our parking lot item. So then just as a quick review, um, looking at the checklist in total, um, do we, are we in need of anything else that would allow us to consider this, um, application complete? Or do we have?
So the, the remaining outstanding items are copy of the Belgrade Shoreland zoning map. The, uh, maintenance, uh, description of ma- the maintenance plan for the, um, stormwater and phosphorus control system. And I believe that's it.
Okay, so, so to me, there, there are two things that are, are not complete. Um, although it sounds like we've talked about how to get those, right? We've directed Jeff Allen to the website, um, and we've talked about what sort of paragraph or text might be used to describe that maintenance plan. So, so, um, I just wanted to mention that out loud.
Yeah, that's something that I, I should be able to provide to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Good job, Jeff.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm looking at the planning board. So how, how are we feeling in terms of completeness? Knowing that tonight we're, there are two things that are not included.
We would definitely like to know that.
Right, you, you and me both. We're, we're trying to get there.
I think that's complete, you know, so we can move on.
Thanks, Pete. George?
I was gonna say, um, it's not 100% complete, but it's substantially complete. The two items that are remaining are relatively minor. Um, and although, you know, we couldn't vote to, my personal feeling is we couldn't vote uh, this, as we normally do, um, that the, that the checklist is, uh, entirely complete. I, I would suggest that, um, since we'll have those two remaining items, again, relatively minor items uh, in the bigger scheme of things, uh, shortly, uh, that we move forward and at the next meeting, i- i- that we move forward uh, with, uh, the, uh, sending out of the notices to everybody within 500 feet and also the town of Rome, because they're within 500 feet. And, uh, finish up the, finishing and, uh, vote on the completion list, uh, at our next meeting and then delve into the details, at which point we could also hear from the public.
Okay, sounds, I think that's a very reasonable approach, um, because I think we know that those two things that we still need are very accomplishable. And I think that we can handle that vote on completeness, knowing that they're interested in supplying that information and it's important to the process. So, uh, I would be in favor of that. Um, and it's going to be minuted and part of this record. Um, so, um, let's talk about, well, let me just ask, plan, planning board members, does that sound like a good, a plan that can work for us?
Yes.
Already mentioned it. Craig, you said yes? Max nodding. Pete, Pete, you're good? Okay. What, um, we need to look at a schedule. When can that occur? Can March, is it going to be March 18? Or, or what, what date would be appropriate for, uh, this next, this hearing that we would have?
Maybe Cog is coming back on. Maybe cog is coming back on the, at our first meeting. Is that right?
Yes.
And probably, I, I, I'm guessing, well, I, I didn't anticipate tonight taking as long as it did, but I suspect that meeting will be long.
Yeah, me too. So I'm going to guess we aim for a second meeting in March, which is March 18. Who do the things that we just talked about. So vote on completeness and then get into the weeds on the rest of the app.
So 18th, a couple more things?
Yep.
That sounds easily accomplishable.
Let us, let us hope. Mac?
I meant the two things we needed, but yes.
Go ahead, Mac.
I, I, I agree with everything that was, has been said. I'm just wondering if the board feels like we should schedule a site inspection as a group?
Come out and walk around my property?
Absolutely.
Mac?
Any one of them. Well, the board, nobody's saying, yeah.
Thank you.
All board members inclusive, come on out.
I mean, we, but we invite the public. Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we invite you as the public as well?
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
To do anything but the right thing.
Yeah, precisely.
So planning board members, is there a need to schedule a site visit? That brings up a good point.
I just wanted up for discussion as an official visit that would have to be advertised as a public meeting, you know? If not, if not, we don't. But if we do, that's why I'm bringing it up because if we have a date for public hearing, it would happen before that.
Right, thanks.
So it would have to be scheduled or, I mean?
So here's the quick and dirty. So if anytime there's a site visit and three or more members show up, that's a quorum. That should be, that by law is supposed to be publicized.
Ah, of course, okay.
What Mac is talking about is to, if we do schedule a site visit and we, we, if anyone or two coordinate and can go out there, that would not constitute a quorum, therefore not air the publication of such scheduled meeting. Well, I'm just looking at the planning board. Mac, if you want to take a trip out there and feel it's important, I would recommend we, that you do so. I'm wondering about that myself.
I guess also related to that is discussion. So if we make it an official visit, you know, then we can actually discuss it amongst each other while we're looking at the property. If not, we'll just look at it and then we'll talk about it at the next meeting. You know, just whatever the, however, I'm curious what other board members feel.
Pete, Peter, I think keeping time, you know, time involved here or under the gun. We have a, a site review, but just keep it to no more than two people at a time. And then we can discuss it after, after the fact.
Pete? So I would be interested in going, you know, I would be so.
I would as well.
Okay.
I'm happy to hear that.
Fantastic. Um, and I'm not sure if Mac would want to go or Pete and Craig, you, you, you might know that site. I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Mike.
All right, so.
If you guys would all, if you guys wanted to go as an official meeting, then I would, I would join you. If we're gonna do just individual walkthroughs, then I'm already familiar with it.
And if I may take a moment, just as I enjoy having customers and just random people that are either biking by, jogging by, walking by, coming in, you guys being a part of this whole thing, I mean, we're trying to make this official together, you should know what we're doing. We're proud of it. I would love nothing more.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
So in keeping in line with what Pete suggested, I'm thinking no more than two at a time myself. So, so to the bright side folks, is there a day to avoid that, like you do other stuff like life calls you, you're not there? We would not want to interfere with that.
Not necessarily. I mean, Sunday would be an exception of a probably not come Sunday, but anytime during the week.
I, I would say just, you know, just give, just tack in and give notice so that we can, so they can make sure they don't have customers there.
Right, or in the middle of something.
Right, so that you can have dual attention or that they're there.
Well, just, I'm, not that I'm saying I'm not, I wouldn't give notice or whatever, but as George stated earlier, if, if it's not a public meeting, then we can't talk. So you know.
We can't talk? For you guys?
We can't talk with you.
Oh, so I just kind of have to be like the, the ghost? Walk you around, not say anything? I mean, I enjoy conversations.
It does seem like it would make sense to have a situation where you could ask questions.
Is this on, is this like, is this normal? I guess I'm confused as to why we're trying to partition this out to have a certain number of people there. I don't explain it.
You're a public viewer at this point and your opportunity to talk is next meeting? Am I not correct?
Right, it is. But I want to, right, I answered Susan's question. So what we were talking about is anytime we schedule a site visit, there's a quorum of people that has to be publicized. So, and we're trying to make it as accomplishable without overcomplicated as possible. That's.
What better way to understand what we're talking about than you seeing it firsthand?
Correct. Yeah, so planning board members. Mac, I heard what you talked about having a, a meeting. What, what are you going to suggest?
I, personally, I, I would like to, to visit and talk. I think, I know that presents complications given our timeline and schedules. But, but I feel like it's a complicated enough application and history and everything that I want to know as much as possible. And I think talking to my fellow planning board members along with the landowners and applicants. Like I learned a lot tonight that I didn't know, just looking at the materials ahead of time, you know? And I think getting that kind of clarification helps me in understanding how to move forward. So I guess I would lean towards trying to find a time when we make it an official meeting.
Then let's throw out a date. Let's, let's get a date on, on the books. What do you got? The good news is we have a month between now and the next meeting. So we have some potential times to schedule and allow us to publicize it.
I believe we need seven days notice.
Right.
So keep that in mind. That would leave at least two week time period.
Right. So let's make this easy. It's got to be before the 18th. Seven days before the 18th is Thursday, the 11th. Could we look at Saturday, the 6th of March?
That's fine for me. But then again, I'm the only one that's retired.
That works for me.
Thanks, Mac. So I'm just trying to come up with.
Back in 15 seconds.
Okay, just trying to come up with something that could fit timeframe that we're talking about. Allow it to get publicized and allow us to have time to get to the meeting.
Right.
And so he's going to go, he'll be right back.
But Tom, a day, he's thinking.
Well, Craig, what do you like?
Yeah, Craig, I'll be honest. I think out of anybody, I would appreciate your being there with your knowledge and history of the site. So if you can't do it, it's kind of a no-go for me.
I mean, try to do it in the morning, not in the afternoon. So don't, you know, waste the whole day waiting. So I'll be giving up.
Morning.
You know, nine, nine o'clock, 10 o'clock or something.
I'm good with that. So, um, we'll check. Here comes our, our point, point guy.
Yep.
Looking at the 6th of March, Saturday. Can nine o'clock work for you?
Yes, it can.
We'll make it work.
Yep.
Thank you, Samantha. All right, so site visit will be publicized? Or planning board to visit, right side, on Saturday, the 6th at night?
How many people are on the, on the planning board? I'm just thinking of social distancing and, and regulation.
Good point.
This isn't a public open visit. It's just the planning board.
Correct.
Well, it is open to the public. I mean, it has to be. We're.
Of a knowledge.
Yeah, so Mac is, Mac is correct.
Right, but I mean, but not.
If we.
We can't have 30 people.
If we post something as a public meeting, it has to be open to the public.
Okay, so people can come, but they have to respect the regular guidelines like that are taking place at the town office, you know? We won't have a whole slew of people all walking in a big swarm.
Right.
The other thing, the other.
All that stuff.
The other thing we could do is we could zoom it from the site. If you wish.
Yep.
You know, I just don't want to expose people.
That's a good thought.
Group of 20 people going through the shop.
Yep, good, that's a good alternative too. And maybe there's a way to do that. So if that were the case, I want to make sure I answer your question. There are five full-time members of the planning board and then there's one alternate right now. So for a total of six.
Okay, two groups of three.
Peter, I won't be able to do it, but that'd be working that I work weekends, so I can't make it. So it'll be five, potentially. Potentially, okay. Thanks, Pete.
I just didn't, I wanted to be prepared if, if we're posting it like a public hearing, public for everybody to show up, you know, as you know, there's been lots of interest in this application. It, I just don't think from a pandemic perspective, it would be good, be good to have 25 or 30 people standing in the shop.
Right. Yeah, so are we good?
So we're gonna show up and we're just gonna zoom it because right now we're in a public here, public forum and we're just zooming. So that should work, right?
I'm going to seek some guidance from the main municipal association about that.
Thank you, Anthony.
So I definitely agree with Samantha, though. Public safety needs to be addressed and whether that's via Zoom or you know, if a crowd should happen to show up or even all of us show up as playing board members, we still need to keep our distance and particularly if we go into the shop. Maybe only a couple of people go in at a time.
Yeah. I think Anthony getting guidance from MMA is great and that would help how we publicize it as a site visit, you know, like we're doing a site visit under pandemic conditions, here's what we're gonna be doing so that it is public, but still within, you know, safety. So I think, I, I think that's great.
Excellent. Okay, so are we good? We're looking at the 6th of March at 9:00 AM. We're looking for more guidance, main municipal from Anthony will be in contact there about basically how it could be done, like ways to accommodate that. We know that we will be operating by state guidelines relative to COVID things right now. So.
Yeah, so so for this meeting, I mean, do you guys have a certain timeline? Do you want to discuss multiple factors? Or do you just want to walk around the property and kind of a general idea of what we're doing?
Speaking for myself, it would be certainly the latter. And, you know, I, I have a real interest in seeing the shop, i- inside the shop.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, and I'll probably have questions about waste handling, frankly.
Awesome. Okay.
Yep. I, I would say for me, the, the latter is very important. It may prompt other questions, but that's how I would be. So to be fair, I want to make sure that, that you may know it may take an hour to do that or something.
That's completely fine.
Okay.
That's completely fine because, I mean, I went to school for boat building. So I've trained a lot of people and worked in a lot of different places. I, I get excited about showing people what I'm doing and what we're doing, you know, so maybe it'll take you more than an hour.
Okay. All right, um, having said all that, where are we? We're good to go, aren't we?
Yeah, we, I, yeah, we.
We voted.
The recap, you know, we need those two minor items at the next meeting, then we can have a vote on the completeness checklist. And then we can take up, get into the weeds of the application.
Yep. Okay. So for bright side, any more questions for us for tonight?
Oh, and most important, as importantly as anything else, that the public be notified in accordance with the ordinance. So that's everybody with property within 500 feet and the town of Rome, since they're within 500 feet on the other side of Mill Stream.
Yeah, George, that's something we've already been talking about.
Okay.
Thank you, Anthony. Okay, so for this particular topic, I think we're all good to move on to the next agenda item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody.
Good evening, folks.
Yep. Thanks, Jeff. Okay, thanks, everybody for your patience. Can we, can we tackle the?